Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Trustees' regular meeting. Today's date is February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. It is seven thirty P. M., and we are meeting here in the auditorium at Oaklawn. Roll call, please.
Mayor Voderer.
Present.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Here.
Trustee Desmond. Trustee Sack.
Here.
We need a motion to allow trustee Stalker to participate telethonically.
Motion. Roll call.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
You there, Bud?
I am, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public comments. Do we have any public comments, Mike Clark? Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, a pledge of allegiance, veterans, please salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, I didn't hear you. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Thank you. Number five is the approval of a regular meeting. Minutes of two thousand twenty-two dash zero two dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. A motion approval. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
New business by village trustee, trustee Oliniechak.
Yes, mayor and village trustees. I just want to update our board on a couple of things. And you'll have to bear with me, it's going to be a little bit, so I'm sorry about that. But last year, on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, our governor signed into Act, the Safety Act, which is a pretty big amount of legislation that, in my opinion, hampers our police officers' ability to do their job. This, just to bring everyone up to date with how that happened, in a lame duck session on January seventh, two thousand twenty-two, this bill, I'm sorry, the lame duck session when it happened, let me go back to it. House Bill thirty-six fifty-three was put together and quickly enacted with no input from our police officers, nor any municipality, or any other governing body except for a state legislator. Some of the things that were put into it haven't gone into effect. A lot of the stuff is going to be coming into effect. And the reason why I revert to this is soon after, on the night of thirtieth of March, two thousand twenty-one, there was a report of shots fired at the Oaklawn Hilton. Our police officers were on-site, did an excellent investigative job. Over twenty-five pages of police, quality police work. Followed due process, followed gaining evidence, followed investigations, all the things that our police officers had to do. It's pretty incredible, the work that our police department did on that night. Moving forward on it, there were five offenders that were charged with felonies from that thirtieth of March, two thousand twenty-one Hilton Hotel shots fired incident. Now, for those of you who haven't lived in Oaklawn for a long period of time, I've been here for over fifty-five years. I can tell you that that is the first time in my life that something like that ever happened. And because of the quick actions of the police and God's goodwill, nobody was hurt in this. But when you take a look at the police report and how many shots were fired, the types of weapons that were used, and all the evidence that was gathered, you would think that due process would follow through. In my update, I found out that three of the people that were charged in it, the charges were dropped by our state's attorneys. Now, putting perspective, I'm a police officer. I get on the scene, I secure the scene, I go through all the investigation, I get the warrants. I do all the things that I'm supposed to do. Before they could even press these charges on it, they have to review it with the state's attorney, correct? State's attorney says, got a good case, continue to go on. Gets to court, state's attorney office drops three of the five people. And we're not talking people that are in a bad situation, just maybe, you know, made a judgment call. These are hardened criminals, the documentation tells. Two of the individuals, one was charged with aggravated unlawful use of a weapon and was denied bond. He was put on electronic monitoring. And then his last court date was on the, pardon me one second, gotta grab my notes here. His last court date was just the beginning of February, in which, from my report here, says that that individual was taken off of electronic monitoring and not put in any bail situation. Is that correct, Chief? Okay. And his next court date is coming up sometime in March. Now, we're going on a year. Shots fired, people almost killed, over, I believe I counted, over twenty shots fired in vehicles at people. Documented, photographed, everything through due process, followed to the T. So now we have an individual that was charged with aggravated unlawful use of a weapon, and he is now out, he was on electronic monitoring. The second individual was charged with aggravated discharge of a firearm, unlawful use by a felon and armed habitual criminal. And he is due, again, to go to court. Now, I do believe in due process, but I have to ask myself, if I'm a police officer, and, mind you, this wasn't just the work of one police officer, there were multiple municipalities that came out there, multiple police officers that went through the investigation. And when you read how this all started, was the gentleman was at the Hilton during spring break with his family. He walks by a group of guys, some words are exchanged, next thing you know, he's going to his car, and he's getting shots fired at him. Horrible. So, we follow due process, we do all the things that need to be done. Three are out already. One was on electronic monitoring, he's been taken off electronic monitoring. And the second one, he's due for a continuance. And this is how things work. When this first happened, everybody was, oh, my goodness, what a travesty. I hope our police get the responsible people and our judicial system holds them accountable. Got the responsible people, and in my opinion, our judicial system's not holding them accountable. But that's almost a year ago, so people start to forget about it. They're going through the criminal system, using the court system for continuance after continuance while they bring the facts that are out there. And it's much like this, the Safety Act. Everybody knew about it, people heard about it, found out that it went through, didn't really understand everything that was there. But now it's going to graduate and continue to graduate and continue to put more restrictions on our police officers, who are already highly trained. In my opinion, the vast majority of our police departments do a very, very fine job. But when you read the next group of things that are coming in, and you see what's happening since that bill has been passed. Armed robbery's up. Shootings are up, deaths are up. What are we solving with this type of legislation? And then the other part of it is, we are blessed with a great police department, but now I'm a police officer, and I'm getting close to retiring, and I'm looking at the conditions that are around me where it seems like it becomes more and more difficult for a police officer to do his job. And they're getting less and less respect with legislation. And now we're having police officers that, God bless them, they deserve to retire. But we are going to be making a motion later on tonight to hire on, is it six or eight? Eight police officers. Eight police officers. And I'm sure there's going to be a report about what it takes to hire on a police officer now, because it used to be, and, you know, trust, our mayor, Voderer, used to be the police list was this long, and there was a waiting period of two, three years. The last time we did this list was a year ago? Chief?
I initially asked for six officers, I believe, right away. To get those six, we had to go through, half of the list was only a list of twenty-five. And now if the ADA are approved tonight, this will most likely exhaust that eligibility list within six months, which would be the first time that's ever happened, probably the history of the department. I mean, I've been here twenty-five years, that's never happened before. It's just kind of the times we're in right now.
And it's not just in the Village of Oaklawn.
No.
It's throughout the whole state of Illinois. And you talk to police officers, and you ask them, what are their concerns? And their concerns are, am I going to make it home safe from work tonight? These police officers went, shots fired, multiple shots fired, did not stop. The men and women did not stop, and they went into a hazardous situation, not knowing if they were going to get shot at or not shot at. I admire someone that's willing to do that, to protect us and other people. Even if they go and do their job, the amount of regulations to even get a case to court, from what I understand, Chief, and you could talk about it, it's extremely difficult to even get them to accept charges, correct?
Yes, we had an incident over the weekend, Friday night, with a multiple offender. He actually had, he'd already had previous incidents where he threatened village employees, assaulted a police officer. At the time, we didn't know what, he had an outstanding arrest from the Cook County Sheriff's Department for resisting arrest and battery to a police officer. Friday night, he assaulted one of our officers with a knife, and charges were denied. So we had to lower it to a misdemeanor.
It's hurting me. And when you take a look at what's happened in the recent past, police officers being shot, police officers being killed. There's still one police officer from the incident downstate that's still in a hospital, from what I understand, but he's recovering?
Yes.
So you've got to ask yourself, is this legislation that was put up by our government, our governor, and our state reps, is it achieving the desired result? Or is it sending a message to the criminals that are out there that, hey, I don't really have to worry about what's going to happen to me, I can do what I want, when I want, how? And I hate to say it, but that's the message that I'm starting to see. And hopefully, I'm not the only one seeing it, because it's happening everywhere. No matter where you live, no matter what town you live in, it's happening everywhere. And it's getting more blatant as time goes on. So I'm going to ask each and every individual that's a resident and voting in the Village of Oaklawn, and whoever else hears this, to consider their choices wisely, because now it's election time of the year, and there are going to be people coming around asking you to sign a petition to put them on the ballot. And I would ask if they have the same values as you have. And I would ask them on positions, what is their position? Because I'm going to tell you, we need to be more proactive with protecting our law enforcement and making sure right is right and wrong is wrong. And we need to make sure that the people that we elect in these next years are people that believe the same thing and will protect our citizens and our police officers. So I'm sorry to take a long period of time, but it's just devastating to hear this type of information on something that happened in Oaklawn. And I guarantee you, if it's happening in Oaklawn, it's happening in Chicago Ridge, it's happening in Burbank, it's happening in New Orleans, it's happening downtown Chicago, North Side, East Side, it doesn't make a difference. These things are happening, but people are forgetting, because it was last year. Don't forget. That concludes my report.
Well said, trustee. If I could just add to that, when I was in my last years as a police chief, we tested, and we had over eight hundred applications. We had to rent the grand ballroom at the Hilton to test. I believe on our last test, I talked with the secretary, we had less than seventy applications. For a very good job, pays wise, benefits, for a great village to work. And more than half of those seventy, give or take a few, were Chicago policemen. That's got to tell you a whole lot about what's happening to our law enforcement community. I don't think people really want this job anymore. And that's the thin blue line, I think, between an orderly society and a safe society. So I hope your words go well, and I hope other members of our community hear them, and certainly take it heart, your advice. Thank you.
The only other thing I'd like to add to that is, for our people that are running up for election, please review the legislation that's out there. Do a better job at getting the input of our people who are out there in the streets enforcing our laws every day. And they really need to review all the things that are in this House bill and in the Safety Act. And we need, we need to continue to put the pressure on our legislators to undo the harm that has been done by the Safety Act.
Thank you. District Three, trustee Mallow.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just echo trustee Oliniechak's comments there. I do believe you are correct, sir, in everything that you've said tonight. On another note, I'd like to just make a comment regarding our residents. The garbage pickup that was a little bit of a struggle this week, we did have some snow that put the garbage truck behind. It happened to be the Wednesday evening, or Tuesday evening, going into Wednesday's pickup. Schools were closed both Wednesday and Thursday, I believe, and then the garbage pickup was postponed. They've never seen that, where they've not picked up two days in a row, so this is a first for them. They are catching up, it took them a little while, but I did notice today that they did make half of the pickups in the districts that get pickups on Wednesday, that will return tomorrow. Tuesday was today, they did make a pickup of the, of one half of the cans that were out there. So I did want to say thanks to the residents that were patient. Most of them just left their cans out there, they realized that it was going to take, they understood the reasoning behind it, and just as long as it got picked up, so I just wanted to make that mention regarding the garbage pickup.
Thank you, trustee Mallow. You know, staff was meeting with Republic, discussed the complications here, and try to see to it that it does not happen during the life of this contract. So we're on top of it, we're trying to resolve it, and trying to see to it that doesn't happen again. District Four, trustee Pembroke.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to support Alex, Mr. Trustee Oliniechak's comments. I think they're very, very on point, so. But I also want to thank the residents of District Four for their understanding and patience with the garbage pickup. Trustee Mallow said our Thursday pickup and Wednesday pickup didn't happen, and I know the residents in District Four have been very patient and understanding. So I want to thank them specifically for that. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Stalker, District Five.
Yeah, I don't want to add anything, I just compliment the commentary that's going on so far. I agree with a hundred percent. Police Department of Oaklawn do a dynamite job, and we need to support them. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. District Six, trustee Sack.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm just going to reinforce everything Alex said. I think you can see this board is united in our support of our police department and all police in general. So there's no doubt in this Village of Oaklawn how much we support our police department. The only other thing I want to mention and compliment, and I know they've been taking heat, is the Public Works Department. We got hit with a lot of snow, and, you know, all the side streets can't get done right away. And people, I think, in the back of their mind know that. But the way the snow fell, when they would finish Ninety-Fifth Street and Cicero and all the main arteries, they had to go back and do those again. We have to keep those clean. And then we get to the side streets, it was a long process, but we got hit hard. And meantime, we've got water main breaks, I don't know what the number was up to. Sixteen water main breaks just this year so far. So Public Works is really going above and beyond, and I think they're taking heat for snow. And all they deserve is a lot of praise and gratitude for getting everything done that they have. And, you know, I just wanted to make that comment, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, trustee. Village managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to add too much to what's been already said, I obviously completely agree with it. But I did want to make another point about the problem with the anti-law enforcement rhetoric and attitudes that are prevalent in our community and others, and how it affects, obviously, the police department, but other attendant activities and businesses. Many of our businesses rely upon our police or other police departments and officers to provide security for their business in the after hours. Multiple businesses over the years in Oaklawn relied upon that. And now we are seeing, I spoke to the chief earlier about this, these police officers, they don't want to take these extra jobs, even if they need the money. And who doesn't need the money, especially if you're raising a young family? But they can't take the risk, the risk of making an arrest and being filmed or accused or otherwise maligned or lied to or lied about. And we are seeing that impact on our businesses in Oaklawn. We're seeing car thefts of our dealers right on Ninety-Fifth Street in the middle of the night, just blatantly walking up and stealing multiple cars. On one evening, a couple of weeks ago, I had three cars. Our dealers are looking for help, they're looking for security, they can't find it. So there's, these problems have ripple effects beyond just the obvious. And the obvious is pretty staggering, that we can't find people to protect us anymore, because we're not standing behind the people that are trying to protect us. But I just want to add that one component that's not often thought about, and how it does impact the businesses that we rely upon to provide us tax dollars so that we don't have to raise property taxes up residence. The other thing I wanted to add is on the snowstorm, trustee Mallow spoke about it. It was significant, as we know. It also unfortunately hit at a particularly bad time in the early morning hours, running into rush hour and continuing, I think unabated, for maybe twelve to fourteen hours. And as has been stated already, as much as we'd like to plow every street at the same time, it's not only impossible, it's impractical. We have to keep the major streets open and the major arteries. I did email the board Wednesday evening, I happened to be driving back through East Beverly, then West Beverly, then Evergreen Park, and then through three of the districts in Oaklawn. I can tell you that we compared very favorably those communities. You could say that Chicago's not a good comparison, but Evergreen Park is a top-tier suburb with a great Public Works Department. All of our major streets were done, our side streets were done at least once. And again, that was twelve to fourteen hours into the storm. We, you know, it's no surprise, there's always going to be the people who complain, who expect curb-to-curb cleaning, who want to believe that the snow is being picked up and moved somewhere. It's not, it's just being pushed around. It's being pushed onto your driveway, it's not purposeful, it's being pushed up on a sidewalk next to your business, it's not discriminating against you. Our trucks don't have the ability to stop every twenty feet at every driveway and not block it in. You know, our goal is to get these streets cleared as quickly as possible so people can go to work, go to school, and then get back to normal. On the garbage issue, it was a perfect storm, no pun intended, of bad communication and lack of direction from our waste hauler, who's admitted as much. We've got, we had multiple different communications told to us, and then they did a robo-call on top of it. So we actually had three different sources of communications going out. The worst part about it was the communication that we were told to direct that said, people in trustee Mallow's district and at least trustee Pembroke's, the third and the fourth, who have pickup Wednesday and Thursday, we were told to tell those residents, leave your hands out. They will pick up through the weekend and into Monday. That obviously didn't happen, and we had a lot of people unhappy through the weekend, understandably so. We will be meeting with our waste hauler on Friday to discuss this. They've acknowledged the problem. But, you know, we share in all of the aggravation that those of you who experienced it felt, and we are going to do something about it. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Tom. You mentioned the auto thefts from our lots. I don't think Oaklawn is unique. I was talking with the chiefs from Tinley and Orland Park and their experience in the same thing from their car lots. These criminals are IDing where they store these fobs for the cars, and they're coming and grabbing these fobs and taking these cars in the middle of the night. So I think the task force is working on that, and hopefully, we can identify these thieves. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I have to ask, is there any conflict of interest on any of the items that we will be voting on tonight? Carrying on, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees, village manager, or village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, a request Board of Trustees' approval and direction of the Fire and Police Commission to hire eight patrol officers from the current eligibility list due to retirements. B, request Board of Trustee approval and direction of the Fire and Police Commission to promote one fire lieutenant and one firefighter paramedic due to retirement. C, a request Board of Trustees' approval of the Appeals and Review Board recommendation for a two-foot garage rear yard variation at ninety-five fifty Campbell Avenue. D is an ordinance allowing that. And E is Resolution twenty-two oh-three dash zero four, a resolution authorizing and approving a separation agreement and general lease between the Village of Oaklawn and Kevin McGinnis. A motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to remove C and D.
C and D. Okay. Please call the vote on A, B, and E.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
All right, C, a request Board of Trustees' approval of the Appeals and Review Board recommendation for a two-foot garage rear yard variation at ninety-five fifty Campbell Avenue. And D is the ordinance that would grant that. Discussion, please.
Well, yeah, I, motion to approve, Mayor.
A second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Mayor, this is just an item on our agenda that's in my district. Is there anybody here from that regarding, not you, sir, but just residents? No, okay. So I did speak with many residents regarding this, at least the ones that are directly affected by it. So I just wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to speak. Since they're not here, we're going to go ahead and move on with that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion passes. We move on to the village clerks' report.
We have the approval of disbursement resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash zero three D, dated February eighth, two thousand twenty-two, in the amount of nine million eighty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and six cents.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion passes. The village presidents' report. A, a request to approve a liquor and tobacco licensing review board's recommendation, six, zero, for a Class D license for the seven-eleven at forty-five oh-one West Ninety-Fifth Street. And B is an ordinance to approve that's new ownership, again, of a Class D liquor license issued by the Village of Oaklawn. C, a request to approve the liquor.
Individually, first two.
Oh, we don't take them all?
No, we don't take them all.
Okay.
A and B together.
Okay.
So we need a motion to approve A and B.
Okay, motion to approve A and B.
Good thing I have you.
A second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion passes. C is a request to approve a liquor and tobacco licensing review board recommendation, six, zero, for a Class Four liquor license at the Gaslet Byron Grill, fifty-one thirty West Ninety-Fifth Street, PGA Spirits Incorporated. And D is ordinance twenty-two oh-three dash six, an ordinance changing the ownership of that Class Four liquor license issued by the Village of Oaklawn. Motion, please.
Like the table?
A motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
A roll call on the tabling?
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Motion to table, passes. All right, general village manager, as much was discussed about the storm, it was certainly taxing to many of our employees. And I'd just like to point out a little bit of a statistic. In addition to all the plowing and all the police, we, during that twenty-four-hour period, which began on Wednesday morning, our dispatch center answered more than six hundred emergency nine-one-one calls and five hundred and thirty-five non-emergency calls. We processed over five hundred and twenty-nine police and fire dispatch reports. So it was a very busy twenty-four-hour period. And I think the general public should realize that their tax dollars are going to a whole lot of services. Some people were quite upset, I got a number. are going to a whole lot of services. Some people were quite upset, I got a number of phone calls, but most people fully understood the problem once I had a conversation with them. I just want to share that with the entire village at this board. Thank you. Uh, now we move on to twelve executive session. Twenty-two twenty-two dash zero-two for the purpose of discussing one approval of the closed meaning minutes. Twenty-two twenty-two dash zero-one dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and pending litigation. A motion, please?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks for coming. Um, this next session is for those, the village board and those that are involved in the litigation.